Okay. Good evening. Seeing that it's 6:04, I will call the Town of Webster's zoning board of appeals meeting for Tuesday, December 7th, 2021 to order. The first item on our agenda is the approval of meeting minutes from November 2nd, 2021. Is there a motion to... All right, so everybody had a chance to read those minutes. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
No.
All right, so Mr. Mason, would you please turn on your mic? Your mic.
I'll make that motion.
All right, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Fales?
Yes.
Mr. Piattar?
Yes. Okay. Public hearings. Kind of a couple of housekeeping notes. The Board of Health has required that masks be worn within Town Hall. Please do not take off the mask while you're in the room. Have it covering your nose and mouth so that we don't violate their order. And I believe the selectmen also approved that order. The microphone here will not be cleaned in between persons approaching it. I think for safety, unless you're an immediate family member, don't congregate up there with opposing parties. Everybody that wants to be heard will be given an opportunity to be heard. As far as the structure of each public hearing, there'll be a staff report given by Ms. Morgan at the beginning of each hearing. The applicant will be allowed, or their representative will be allowed, to present the application. There will be public comments from those who wish to comment on it. And then the applicant will be allowed to make a final comment if they so choose. So with that, we'll open the variance application for 60 Colonial Road with the reading of the hearing. Mr. Daggett?
In accordance with the provision of the Webster zoning bylaw, Section 650-11(c), the Webster Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on a variance application submitted by Brian Pelletier of Three Cedar Point Road, Webster, Mass., applicant-owner, for relief from the front yard setback requirement for the construction of a two-car garage with a residential living space on the second floor on property located at 60 Colonial Road, Webster, Mass. Said location is within Lake Residential and Lake Watershed Protection zoning districts. Assessors ID 39-A-54-0.
Okay. Ms. Morgan, is there a staff report?
There is, but I think the applicants in the room should be aware of the fact that one missing member could potentially jeopardize the voting status when it comes time to making a decision. All of these applications require what's called a supermajority vote, which means you have to get four out of five yes votes. By having one member absent, that puts the application in jeopardy. Mr. Canoyer can opt to but not be forced to view the video and sign a Mullen certification. If he does not sign that Mullen certification to watch the meeting and have dispensation to be eligible to vote for the next meeting, your application would remain in jeopardy. So it's up to each applicant to decide whether or not they want to continue the hearing until you have five members present, or to proceed with four, knowing it's at risk.
Mr. Pelletier, what is your desire? Proceed. Okay.
Okay. This is a situation where the applicant is in a Lake Residential zone. This is the plan that they've put forward, and I'll see if I can scroll that up a little bit. Right now, they're showing the front yard setback at 20 feet, 10 inches. However, as we know, that the district regulations also require that staff analyze the average setback distance in the neighborhood within 300 feet. We ran that analysis on the... And I did not bring it with me. I apologize. But it's not 20 feet. They are in violation of the average distance set forth in the district regulations.
I think that setback in...
I thought I had put that up.
I'm sure... I believe the applicant said...
I can go back to the...
29. He states 29 feet.
29. So based on the average within 300 feet, the setback, front yard setback, should be 29 feet, not 20 feet. Unfortunately, the bylaw is written in such a way that both of those regulations have to be taken into consideration.
Okay.
So he's proposing 20. He needs 29, and that's why he's here.
Okay. All right. Mr. Pelletier? If you would please present your application, as you wish.
Good evening.
Mr. Mask. We have to have the mask on at all times.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know it's uncomfortable.
Yeah. Okay. I had submitted the application, and based on the 300-foot radius, I had come up with a different figure than Ann had come up with. She asked me to do it first, and I did it first. And the reason why mine came up differently, one of the reasons, is Patterson Road. They now have a new home there. At the time I was doing it, they didn't give a... What do you call it? Occupation? I mean occupancy permit? And so I had felt those two properties at that point in time hadn't been actually purchased or finished. They were in the process of building them. But my average came up to something like 19 and change, I believe.
Yeah, 19.36, I believe, is what you wrote.
And most of the properties did change it to that amount. Were the closest properties in proximity to my lot. One of them is... Let me see. I think it's Lot 46, if I can see it. It's got a garage very close. I think it's about one foot from the property line to the road. And then, let me see. There was another one. I think it's Lot 47. And Lot 48. I did not take in... Well, and also, there's a lot over here, number 58, that was closer to the road. I did not take into account the right-of-way houses that are pretty much use the right-of-way for the access of their properties. So it's tough to decide, even though Lot 49 does have frontage, and it's consumed probably about 20 feet out of the 27-foot radius, I believe it has. 20 feet of it is the right-of-way going in. And they access their home by the right-of-way. And that's why I really didn't use that, because of how all those properties, the further properties, they had right-of-ways going across their property. Let me see. I believe that's about it.
So are you contending that the 29-foot setback, 29-foot setback, is not correct? Or, I mean, is...
Well, it's corrected however you want to choose, you know? I'm coming for a variance.
Right, yeah. We haven't even reached that issue yet, the elements. You know, we're talking about the setback. So if, you know, if we were to find that it's 19.36, then a variance wouldn't be needed, but that might... That's a question of fact.
You know, because like if you read the setbacks, historically, sometimes it depends on the people that are in charge. I can remember doing some building and so forth, and previously, years ago, it would be left and right, okay, 300 feet, being the sides of the dwelling.
Yeah, there is a number of ambiguities in that bylaw. I'm not going to dispute that.
No.
But, you know, I don't want to stay on this point too long unless you absolutely want to.
No, I don't.
But if we agree that it's a 29-foot setback, we can probably proceed...
We'll agree that it's 29.
29 foot. Okay. Did... I see your attorney here. Did you want to make the arguments for the four elements, or did you want your attorney to do that?
I wanted my attorney to do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members. Howard Potash, I represent the Pelletiers. I would just point out that the rear yards, side yard, both side yards are sufficient. The minimum lot area, a variance was granted by this board. And one of Butters did appeal, and the matter is pending in the Superior Court, and it's probably going to result in a speeding trial in early 2022. So the only area that's missing is the front yard, which is 29 required, and there's 20...
Mr. Potash, not to interrupt, but this is the exact same application that this... The structure itself and its setbacks has not changed from the application on the minimum lot size that this board heard this summer. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, nothing has changed. And I would just point out that this lot, as I pointed out in the previous hearing, there is a 1941 partial foundation that was started in 1941 by a Mr. Bear, that he abandoned it to build another house on Webster Lake, which is now 60 years later. That lot has been sitting there. Debris collects in that lot and ends up in the lake. And it is a matter that is going to be cleared up by the construction of this very small structure with two small garages on the first floor and a small apartment on the second floor, which will improve the area. My clients bought the lot. There is no way of buying any additional land, and that is a hardship. I don't believe, as I argued before, that this derogates from the zoning bylaw. In fact, it improves the area because this lot is just sitting there, and debris collects, and it really is somewhat of an eyesore, just sitting there. And this structure, the plans my clients presented, will improve the area. For the same reasons that the board granted the previous variance, which I believe will be upheld by the court, that the board would be entitled, as a matter of law, to grant it. This 20 feet is more than sufficient to protect the area. There's going to be probably one or two people living there at most, and there'll be no vehicles on the street. There'll be in the garage, and it's going to be a handsome structure, which is much nicer to look at than now. There're not going to be any increased traffic. There's not going to be any debris, dust, or any negative factors that are going to occur because of it. And there are, on the lake, as in most lakes, Webster Lake, there are small lots, and setbacks are many times limited because, to maximize the construction on a lake, there were small lots and houses close together, which is consistent with Webster Lake and other lakes in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, other waterfront areas. So we believe that the board is absolutely entitled under the law to grant a variance from 29 feet to 20.10 feet, and we would ask the board to do so.
All right. So what is special about this lot in relation to soil condition, shape, or topography that causes this garage to be located at that location? Could it be shifted backwards towards... I know there is a little bit of space. Maybe it's a foot or two on the rear yard, but is there something back there that's causing the house to be shifted in that location?
I have here tonight... I would like to ask Zachary Gless, the surveyor, to come forward, and perhaps you can answer that question. I don't believe, from what I know, that you can place the house, this small house and two garages on the first floor, any different. I think, based upon the lot size, 3227, I think this was the best way that you could... The best way you could place the house to comply with all the other setbacks, the rear yard and the two side backs. I don't think there is much, any room to maneuver, but can I ask him to come forward, please?
Sure.
Zachary?
Yes, yeah. Good evening. My name is Zach Gless. I'm from existing grave, representing Mr. Pelletier. In regards to your question about trying to pull the house further back, there is a large steep slope that does get down to the lake back there, that if we tried to pull that house any further back, would it be really impacting that? And there is potential for further issues with conservation or any sort of site design requirements.
Right. So putting it...
...with where the house is right now.
Right. So would putting that house backwards create a financial hardship? Would it cost more money to build the house? Okay.
It would be impacted the banks of the lake, and then again, there'd be other...
Right. We're not the Conservation Commission. I mean, the lake is important, but we're more...
No, I understand. It would be a financial hardship to pull that house further back, again, with the design and construction requirements for that existing slope, but having to dig into that and...
The structure, if the nine feet were to be enforced, if the 29-foot setback was to be enforced, the house would be roughly... Or the garage, I'm sorry. The garage would be roughly 17 feet wide. Would that be an acceptable depth for a garage?
You would not be able to fit a car and be able to close the door adequately with only 17-foot depth. I mean, a typical parking space is 10 by 20 feet, so anything shallower than that 20 feet, all of a sudden becomes a very big issue. So we have the 26 feet, which does accommodate the two-car garage, and to go any less than that would...
So 26 feet would be reasonable for what a garage would be?
The standard garage size that most people have on their houses, about 26 feet deep, allows you to put a car in there and still navigate around it within the confines of the building.
Okay. All right. And such a structure would not create any excessive noise, dust, vibrations to the area? This would not be a unique structure for the Lake Residential District?
No, no. It's very typical with, you know, the other kinds of structures within the area.
Okay.
And again, to reiterate that, where this building is being placed, it's more compliant than a lot of the other buildings within the immediate area. It does be, again, that, as you're aware, the front yard setback has some ambiguity in it. There is only two definitions for what you hold, and we do hold the 20-foot setback that is a portion of that front yard setback definition.
Okay. Any other questions from other members of the board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Would any members of the public care to offer a comment? Yes, sir.
I prepared a little presentation, not a presentation, but a little speech for you guys, and then I'd like to take a few minutes to address some of the comments that were just made.
Sure.
If you would, because there's some new stuff in there. So my name's Ray Prunier. I'm speaking today on behalf of Five of Butters, so it's not one of Butters that's challenging this. There's Five of Butters. We've been here for over two years, kind of opposed to this in any way that we can. As you know, there's legal action right now being taken on this situation. So I just want to make sure you understand that we are still fully engaged, passionate and intense about why this is the wrong thing to do for our neighborhood. So this is the second variance that... Actually, it's the third, if you think about how many times we've been here on this property. But right now, this is the second full variance that we're having to deal with, and that sounds an alarm to us already, hopefully to you guys, that says, wait a minute, why are we having multiple variances on a property that we already know is out of whack in many different dimensions, even though the applicant will argue that it's not? It's 3,000 square feet average. In our neighborhood, it's 9,000 square feet. He is, you know, there's a whole bunch of things around the setbacks that we can argue, especially now that this one has come forward, that makes sense. The original approval was based on the assumption that they were approved on all the setbacks, and that's clearly not true, based on this conversation. And that was not addressed to the board at the time, which we think it should have been. So I'm going to want to walk through some of our thoughts and commentary about that. So also, I want to make sure that I recognize the folks that are here, because we do have four of the Five of Butters that are here and have been here almost every meeting through conservation and zoning, and we're hoping that that carries some weight with the town and with the board, that we're serious about it. So of course, we have the Pruniers, myself, Ray, and Gloria are here. We have Daryl Seer. He's at 62. We're at 57. We have Cindy Bishop and William Stampler at 51, and we have Joshua Young at 55. Two are direct Butters. We're across the street. So these are very impacted people by this particular request. So also, Lois and Lee Fauchet couldn't be here for medical reasons, but they asked me to make sure that I notify you that they are still, stand with us in opposition to this, and that's the fifth family. And they're at 63 Colonial. So I've attempted to try to use the regulations that, you know, have been cited before for these type of setbacks, so bear with me. I'm not a lawyer, and, you know, we just did this as a group. So we're here to argue that the proposed apartment setback, and again, the applicant calls it an apartment, so keep that in mind, variance does not comply with the average setback requirements of the Lake Residential area. And Webster's current regulations, within a 300-square-foot radius, and this was noted rightfully by our Webster Planning Director in the application. It's a new construction proposal, which should require the apartment to adhere to all the most current regulations and laws, not going back 100 years or whatever that we keep talking about. It has to be today's regulations that they need to adhere to. That's our contention. One of our assertions is that the proposed construction is uncommon and unreasonable within the affected area in our neighborhood. So we keep talking about how this fits into the neighborhood. It does not fit into our neighborhood. Please come down, drive around, and tell me why a small garage with an apartment on the top fits into our neighborhood in any way at all. So the statement that it fits in, we believe, is misleading, it's incorrect, and it's an opinion. We strongly believe the garage with an apartment on top will be detrimental to the neighborhood and like anything in the area. And again, you just have to drive down there and see it and tell me that we're crazy, because it doesn't fit in our area. And again, I've got to say it, the average lot size in our 300-foot area is 9,000 square feet. This is 3,000 square feet. It's off the charts, not... It doesn't get to the 5,000, which is the requirement normally by zoning. Another assertion is that it will dramatically increase overcrowding of the land in the public roadway, and it will significantly increase traffic noise, dust and density in the neighborhood. Again, if you see how this property will lay, it's impossible that it will not do that. In our area, it's already very congested. It's in a cul-de-sac at the end of a dead-end road. We have all kinds of complications with vehicles that go down there and try to get in and out, including safety vehicles, that we're really concerned about. And all this is going to do now is place a property, again, and I'll point to a comment that was made, that says, well, only one or two people are going to live there and only a couple cars. You know that that cannot be managed and controlled, right? There's no way to manage that. We've actually seen firsthand rental property next to us that have clearly violated this and caused all kinds of issues for us personally in the neighborhood. So I don't believe that you can say that, oh, yeah, only one person's ever going to live there, and there's ever going to be one car, and it's always going to be in the garage, and that we totally, strongly disagree with that. And again, we keep talking about the lot size is just incredibly small. So the applicant states that the project will eliminate clutter. We would argue that packing an apartment with a garage on a small lot in our dense neighborhood actually creates clutter. It's going to cause it. It's not going to reduce it. It's going to make everything worse. The partial will be actually the definition of clutter and congestion in the area. So using the land for storage, parking, and green space, which has been, you know, presented as a negative thing to us, is actually the more common and reasonable practice around the lake to reduce and eliminate clutter, and I'll talk about that down the road. Some of you live on the lake. Most of you have driven around the lake. Drive around the lake and tell me you don't see everywhere people that have plots of land or on their common space in their land where they store their boats for the winter, they store their jet skis, they put their cars there, they do the right things to actually make their property less cluttered. It's the way that the lake operates. So to say that, oh, I can't do anything but put a piece of, put a building there with a garage because that eliminates clutter, to us doesn't make any sense. The other assertion is that the apartment will be detrimental to the character of our neighborhood. So the statement made by the applicant is that it's an upscale garage. It'll beautifully enhance the curb appeal and valuation of our homes. How do you make that? How can that be a factual statement that's clearly an opinion, a misguided opinion in our mind? Again, the project doesn't fit into the type, size, and general construction of any of the other properties within the affected areas. I'm hoping that you will see that if you went down there. So again, I'm going to say it one more time. There are no garages with rental property or apartments on top within 300 feet or anything in our neighborhood like that. It's not part of our neighborhood. So allowing construction of the undersized lot will eliminate also one of the few remaining green spaces that we have on the street, believe it or not. Any questions on that? I know I'm kind of going fast.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Blasting away at you. So we'd argue that this building apartment is not the most appropriate and common use of the land, and we strongly believe that the current use of the land, again, is appropriate. And like I said before, it's confusing to think that you have to have, you have to fill a piece of land with a building to make it appropriate for the lake. And actually, in our mind, it hurts the lake and it hurts our neighborhood. As a note, we talked about the property being changed. The previous owner, which is Friends of the Family, actually respectfully prepared that lot, knowing that it could not be built on at the time, to actually prepare it for its most effective use, which was storing their boats, doing all the right things to prevent clutter and to take pressure off of the properties. So from a hardship standpoint, so the whole hardship thing kind of is confusing to us also, right? We feel that the hardship that's created is actually impacting the neighborhood and the citizens of the area. The financial hardship, please look up the, what is currently on the books for taxation for that property, right? To understand what the value of it is and has been for probably 80 years as land. Our hardship would be, or his hardship would be not financial, just don't build the thing. His hardship of not being able to build it is not financial in the sense of what we would say would be the hardship to the rest of the neighborhood. So there are Five of Butters, again, that have persistently and passionately opposed this construction. We've always strongly believed that due to the style and location, all those fun things, it negatively impacts our property and will devalue our property. So we believe we have the hardship to bear from this, more than anybody else. It does not appear to be appropriate, our hardship, so the Butters strongly feel that our hardship's not appropriately considered or recognized in defining what the hardship is. It feels like it's all in one direction, and that's confusing to us. How can the hardship just be the applicant if the hardship is being imposed on all of the Butters, five of us present? the Butters, five of us present arguing this point? It doesn't make sense to us.
Well, the hardship on, as the statute's written, is, the applicant has to burn to prove that one of the factors is soil condition, shape, topography or an existing structure is causing a hardship on the applicant.
Okay.
I'm not aware of any case law that takes into an account financial hardship on the Butters, if that even factors into this statute.
Okay. Yeah, it's just a, when you look at-
But if that's your argument, you know, I'm not saying don't make it.
Yeah, I mean, it's more of just like, when we look at the definition of hardship, it kind of talks about, you know, the common good and good for the public. And it, it just felt, and I think you helped explain that, but it felt like the hardship in this was all one way, right? It was only, is the applicant financially getting hardship? Or what about the rest of the neighborhood? It doesn't seem to be part of that knowledge. But thank you for that, for that explanation. So we talked about the public good, and that's what I was going to get into, this interesting thing. And I'm going to bring this up, is that the definition, what I found for public good is the general welfare of the people, the best interest of the community, right? Public good. The applicant states that the apartment would create a safer environment due to trespasses in the neighborhood. I've got to tell you, we're confused, you know, about that, that statement. We don't understand the basis for that. We can't find any police reports or anybody that we know that called about trespasses in the neighborhood or anybody getting injured in the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, we are at a dead-end street. There's no foot traffic in the neighborhood, except for people that live there. So that, that to me is not necessarily a safety concern. Several Butters have lived there for decades and have never once called the police. This is, again, the, if the applicant feels compelled that his property is causing some safety issue, put up a fence. There are other ways to do that than having to build an apartment to make the property safer. In reality, approving the construction actually reduces safety to our neighborhood. This is due, again, to the congestion, noise, dust, traffic, access of safety vehicles, increase in street parking. We've seen this personally, by the way, and just general clutter that's going to be created by having this, this house fill this entire lot with no, no green space of any kind, intruding into our neighborhood. It just doesn't work. So we think that the public good is really not in the neighborhood's public good. Getting to the end. So I'd like to note just a couple of things, and then I'll close out with just answering a couple of these points. So as you know, and I know that this isn't part of the zoning kind of realm, but that the Webster Conservation Commission, who we highly respect, has previously denied a permit for construction on this lot because of the steep slopes in the rare proximity to a wetland, to a swamp, okay? The WCC looks at approvals based on 360 degrees, right? They look at approvals based on not just the water, but the wildlife and the plant life. And the DEP has given a superseding order. And our research shows that that order is solely based on water quality. It doesn't do the 360-degree. So granted, the impact that they chose to prove is that building this will not hurt the water, but it doesn't do the 360 degrees. We believe that the WCC really demonstrates that they protect the lake from a 360-degree standpoint. I'm going to bring that point up because that seems to be lost in the conversation of, again, protecting our lake. And in the end, we all should be doing that. And once again, the Butters continue, continue to oppose this construction. We hope that we are properly considered as part of the public good equation and not just the applicant. So a couple more things. I'm sorry, I keep, I keep talking. Is there anything else?
No, that, it's a public hearing. You have, you have the right to-
Lathering along, so, all right. So we talked about, let's make sure that we recognize that the property, and again, so my family and some of the Butters' families go back three generations in this area. We know what this is, what happened there. And it's firsthand. That property was abandoned. It started to build flagstone walls in the shape of a, potentially in the shape of something that you could call a foundation. By any current means, it's not a, you could not build on that. It's not rebar and cement. It's a flagstone. I could go over there and push them over with my foot right now. So, and it was abandoned. It was left, right? So, and for all intensive purposes, that property reset, and it's been land ever since then. Nothing has ever been used for it, except land. They are not improving our area. The area does not collect debris. I mean, that's another one that we fought in conservation that said, that's another opinion of term, of how that property was being used. And by the way, the Conservation Commission would argue that if it's leaves and sticks and things like that, that's normal. It isn't like, you know, we're, they're throwing garbage in there. It was stated that they believe that this will be upheld in court. We believe otherwise. So we believe that the variance right now is in court, and it will not be upheld in court. So I just want to make that point because I'm going to counterpoint that belief. And, and I think I hit everything.
All right. Do you contend the applicant's assertion that the land has a unique shape or topography?
It is too small and it falls off a cliff to the swamp. That's the only thing I can tell you. So I don't know if that makes it unique. Mr. Peter, I, I mean, to me, it's, it's undersized. It's not normal for our neighborhood, and it literally drops 10 feet straight down to a swamp.
Okay. Do you contend that that would create a hardship for the applicant?
Not that, not the unique side of it. I think the contention is that the building of the apartment will create a hardship for us.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No. Well, I do-
Okay.
Could we, and not specifically for you, but Ian, could we go back to the picture where Ted is standing on the lot and there is a brown garage that's built?
We're not talking about this one.
No. You can see it hanging over the edge of the lot next door.
This one here?
Yeah, but it was a different, it was a side view.
Yep. Let me go find my way back to that project. Okay. It's the one before that. So we have all three of the applications for this property on the website.
Was it in the neighborhood? The same neighborhood?
Yeah, it had, it looked like it had a double stacked foundation on the back to meet the slope of the property, and there was a room above it.
This is the one we're talking about?
Yeah, scroll down. It's the garage to the left. I think there's one more picture. There it is.
So Mr. Seer is here that owns that property?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'll permit for property pull.
I have a question.
Yep.
Do we know the distance from that garage to the street?
That I don't know.
2,000, drive in front of the garage. We're on the street.
Would we care to have that gentleman come up and answer those questions? Or do we, are we done with?
That was my only question.
That was your only question?
Come back.
Okay. So what was your, your name and your address?
Daryl Seer.
Daryl Seer of-
D A R R Y L.
Okay.
C Y R.
Yep.
And 62 Colonial Road.
Okay, so 62 Colonial Road. Thank you. I just wanted that recorded in the record.
So thank you for your patience.
Not a problem, not a problem. This is a public hearing, so you're entitled to speak to it. All right. Any other public comment on the application? Okay. Yes, sir?
My name's Joshua Young, 55 Colonial Road, I'm in a Butter. I would just keep this short and sweet. When I purchased my property, it was very clear to me that the property that I had across the street was unbuildable. And I think one of the things I'm disturbed about is the neighbors trying to build on a property, a piece of property that was clearly unbuildable and has been for many years. So I just want to make that point for a record.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Right. Any other public comments on the application? Okay. Mr. Pelletier or counsel, would you care to offer any responses to what we heard from the public?
I would just simply state that there is not going to be any increased traffic by this small structure. Any vehicle will be in the garage. There's not going to be increased traffic. There's not going to be congestion. That, that just isn't accurate. And it is not going to derogate from the neighborhood the value. And if, if anything, it's going to clear up this old abandoned foundation that's been sitting there for 60 years, that's going to enhance the value of the other houses around, not decrease any, any value. It just, it's just an allegation that is, is not provable by any factual, reasonable factual basis. This, and this, this lot is small. The board sought in its judgment to grant a variance and, and inconsistent, in my opinion, with the zoning bylaw and the statute, and, and consistent with, with other houses, a lot of other houses on the lake. Now, the lot is, the nature of the topography of the lot that it drops down, this is the most reasonable structure proposed by the engineer to enhance the lot and improve the lot and not derogate from, from, from the lot. The Butters, and I would point out, you heard from two tonight, but in the Superior Court action, there is only one Butter appealing, Mr. and Mrs. Prunier. And I would point that out. They're the only plaintiff in the case against the ZBA and against the Pelletiers. And I would point out that any traffic that's, that's there during the summer, it usually comes from their house near their driveway where they have guests and not, and not from anyone else. And, and there is, the only people turning around on that street on that dead end are not going to come from the structure if the Pelletiers are allowed to build it, but from Prunier, from the Pruniers and other people there, not, not from, from the Pellet, not from the Pelletiers. The second floor apartment is going to be about 500 square feet. It's only, there's only room for one or two people. There's not going to be a, a lot of people. There's either going to be a single person there, probably a single person, not even a couple, but most a couple. And, and that is, that, that is, is the accurate facts. And this lot is not going to, is not going to be a negative factor in the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
All right. You mentioned apartment. That apartment's going to be rented to, rented by the applicant?
I don't believe my clients have plans to, to rent it at this time. They could in the future, but they don't, they, they plan basically to have one of their daughters use it. They have two daughters who live out of the area, who would probably use it during the season or other times. They don't plan to rent it to a non-relevant, but for one of their two daughters, they have two adult daughters who, who I think, who live in, not far from Webster, who would come and use it. That's their plan.
Okay.
And I would point out that they own other property in Webster, and they've been good owners. They maintain their properties and they do everything that's responsible.
Okay.
They've never done anything that's irresponsible in other, in their house on Webster Lake or done, done anything to be detrimental to any of the, to, to any of the owners. I would also point out that DEP did issue a superseding order, superseding order, that Mr. Prunier had an opportunity to appeal that to the Superior Court of a Land Court. He never did. So that order stands as a matter of law. It cannot be appealed now. And their, their order stands. And, and he could have appealed it. He did not. And, 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 and since my client started his project, Mr. and Mrs. Prunier have continued to pursue him, which is their right to oppose and appeal. And they have an absolute, they have an absolute right under the law to, to do that. But however, I would point out, they've made the same allegations over and over again. And, and, and the DEP did not sustain those allegations. And those allegations of congestion, of traffic, of noise, at one point, they said increased dust, it, it just isn't factually correct. There are allegations that are just frankly made up, and there is no factual basis to sustain those facts. It just isn't going to happen. And, 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 and my clients live on Webster Lake. They've never had a lot of traffic or congestion near their house. So it, it just isn't something that, that there's any track record for. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the board? No?
Thank you very much, members.
All right. Is there a, is there a motion to close the public hearing for 60 Colonial Road?
Karen, can I just make a point here? If the variance is not granted, that would essentially create a situation where they wouldn't be able to build the garage, but they still would have buildable area. Based on what I'm looking here, it would be a 17 by 30-foot area in which to build if the variance were denied. So essentially, the question at hand is really about the garage and the depth of the garage.
Okay.
Okay?
I make a motion to close.
There are motions?
60 Colonial.
Is there a second?
A second.
There's a second. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
Mr. Piotr?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So there will be a draft decision that will be submitted by Ms. Morgan before our next meeting on January 4th. The board will vote on that decision and the, and make findings. No other public comment is allowed on this application. And, so you're welcome to come back and observe, but there won't be any public comment further at that, on the January 4th meeting. Okay, so we're going on to-
I do have a question. Did we already schedule it January 4th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, you published the schedule at your last meeting. Your next meeting in January is the 4th.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And before, before we discuss the, the next item on the agenda, I have a disclosure. So I'm Chris Daggett. I'm the clerk for the zoning board, and I'm also a director of the Webster Lake Association. And the next applicant had previously made donations to the Webster Lake Association. And I am unaware of any present donations or anything that would impact my ability to do my job as a zoning board member. And I filed the disclosure with Ann, and it will go to the, the Board of Selectmen. And I got that direction through the State Ethics Commission.
Okay, thank you. I'll add that Chris contacted the State Ethics Commission on his own due diligence So the variance application for 200 Gore Road. Mr. Daggett, could you please read the, the public notice?
Well, Mr. Chairman, we, you've got some procedural issues to consider before you decide to open the hearing. And I'll review those with you quickly. And then the applicant also has been made aware of the fact that you do not have a supermajority.
Right.
Well, you have a supermajority right now, but in the absence of Mr. Canoyer. Okay, so in speaking with town council, there are two issues at hand. He pointed out that because the variance application is specifically for the pavilion and no variance application was filed for the house, you can only consider the variance for the pavilion. However, he stated that two applications are required, and he recommended that the applicant, that you do not open the hearing and continue to a different date and give the applicant time to file that second application so that they can run concurrently. Because if you open the, if you open the application- Because if you open the application now and you take the decision, you cannot approve the variance for just the pavilion without taking into consideration the non-conformity being created for the house down here, and we have no application for that right now.
So Mr. Balsillus, I'm assuming you're representing Mr. Robert?
Correct.
Okay. As his representative, do you want this board, or given what Ms. Morgan just said, do you want this board to open the public hearing for this variance application?
My question is, why wasn't I notified of this when I made the application, which I went over with Ann, and she strictly knew what I was trying to accomplish here?
Well, I think your application is unique. Even I had some difficulty examining it, and one of the things we want to do is make sure that we are procedurally correct in how we analyze the application. I think Ann does a fine job in her role, and other legal ramifications could create an issue on appeal if, which she just said, we would likely have to be forced to deny your variance application if we opened it.
And I was unaware until I was able to present this to town council. When this was first brought to me, I also, like Mr. Balsillus, assumed that one application was necessary, but in reviewing the law and some of the intricacies with this, he stated very clearly that two applications were required. So there was no malicious intent.
Right.
It was until town council looked at it, and given the unique situation, we just did not know.
Obviously, I am seeking relief to take a building out of, now that it's encroaching on 27 Lakeview Road.
You can only take up the procedural matter.
Yeah.
Say that again?
They can only discuss with you the procedural matter of one or two applications. If you want to proceed with the singular application for the pavilion, it's got a fatal flaw. So your options here are going to, you have three options. You can request a continuance to file the second application and have both hearings heard concurrently to keep everything legal. You can request a continuance to confer with your client on their options because there is a much bigger problem with regards to the use of that corner of the pavilion that crosses into the lake residential zone. Or you can withdraw it without prejudice. And I can't tell you anything more about what the lawyer said without you opening the public hearing, but I can tell you, this is a big fat problem. And I can't tell you anything more.
In my eyes, it's not a big fat problem. What we're doing is taking a building that is over the property line, and in order to clean the title...
Yeah, I understand that. So your decision is to open the public hearing, then?
Obviously, I shouldn't open the public hearing because I have to abide by what the law says.
Well, the decision is yours. You can confer with counsel of your own, and being an attorney, I know lawyers differ on their opinions on similar issues. But the decision is yours. It makes no difference to me to hear your application tonight. That's, you know, obviously, this board would probably get a determination from our own counsel as to whether or not the application should be approved. But like I said, as we're relating to these three options of opening, continuing, or withdrawing without prejudice, the choice is yours. The choice is not mine.
Withdraw without prejudice because then I don't have a power of application for the pavilion. What would be the best thing to do? Could I explain what we're trying to accomplish here?
I can't allow you to start explaining the application because then it's a fact though it's been opened, and then we have to proceed.
If we opened the hearing and you listened to me, I could come back before your next meeting and file the necessary paperwork for 27 Lakeview Road, or I can't do that.
Procedurally?
Procedurally, they wouldn't be heard concurrently.
Right.
So you would have them on multiple different meetings, and then there would be a disconnect between the two applications. It's procedurally difficult for you, and it's onerous on the butters who come out. It's better to have them done at once.
Okay.
So could I file the necessary paperwork for 27 Lakeview Road and be heard concurrently that same day regarding both these?
Well, if you were to do that, you would have to push that meeting out in time for us to schedule it.
Now you have no questions?
Which would be February 1st.
Why wouldn't it be at the next meeting?
Because it's advertising.
Advertising.
We have to advertise, and you're missing deadlines for advertising.
I understand.
Me not going forward tonight, me going forward tonight makes no sense. So that's off the table. And I'd have to wait till February 2nd, correct?
I believe that's, Ms. Morgan, you said February 2nd?
Yep. I'm just double checking the deadlines. Okay. So, okay, if you, the deadline for the January 4th meeting for a new application would have to be in my office no later than noon on December 14th.
So you have time.
And then there would be time to hear them concurrently on January 4th.
January 4th.
That's if there is a quorum, correct?
If you don't open the hearing, the quorum starts fresh on January 4th.
Yeah. Yes. Your quorum issues tonight likely would not apply to January 4th if we have five members So if your application was open tonight and one person voted no, your variance application would be denied.
Never been before a ZBA meeting where you have to file two applications to fix a property line. I've never heard that.
You're creating two new side yard setbacks that are both deficient. Each property has to have its own variance because the variance is run with the land and they're filed in court. That's what I was told by town council. So each one has to have its own standalone decision. It's a standalone application.
If I was notified tonight of this information, I wouldn't have been here, and I wouldn't have been here, and I would have saved this board a lot of time in coming here and holding this hearing. Obviously, I have to continue it, not continue it, don't open it, file the necessary paperwork for that lot, and we'll see you on...
January 4th. Okay.
On what day?
January 4th.
No, not January 4th, right?
Yeah, it would be January 4th. Get the paperwork to me by December 4th.
The filing deadline is December 14th.
January 4th.
Fourth. All right. I apologize for myself, but...
The other question I have is, I've brought copies of some stuff.
I cannot accept that. No, I cannot.
All right. So I know next week...
Right. If you did bring copies, I would strongly encourage you to file those with Ms. Morgan so she can upload that to the file.
No, they're the same as that, except I colored them up so you guys can get a full detailed look.
If you colored them up, like I had, what I just said still applies. Just please submit it. That way, we have a chance to look at the application in its entirety beforehand if you have no information. Thank you.
You need a motion to move the hearing to January 4th at 6:00 PM.
All right. Is there a motion to move?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Fales?
Yes.
Mr. Piattar?
Yes.
Okay.
62 Blueberry Hill. Mr. Mason, the applicant shares the same last name as you. I want for the record, would you happen to state?
There is no relation. I do not know who they are. Unfortunately, they must be nice people, but because of their last name.
All right. So there is no ethics violation or at issue here with Mr. Mason, even though the applicant, Mr. Drew Mason, Drew and Jessica share the same last name. Okay. Mr. Daggett, would you please read the public hearing notice?
Are the applicants aware that they have their applications at risk with only four members?
You wish to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Daggett?
In accordance with the provisions of the Webster zoning bylaw, section 650-11C, the Webster zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on a variance application submitted by Jay Glant, Glant Architects of 42 Maple Street, Paxton, Mass., applicant, and Jessica and Drew Mason, 62 Blueberry Hill, Webster, Mass., for relief from the side yard setback requirement to accommodate a newly constructed house on the property located at 62 Blueberry Hill, Webster, Mass. Said location is within both agricultural, single-family, residential, and lake watershed protection zoning districts. Assessors ID 65-A-26.
Ms. Morgan, could you please provide the staff report?
Yes, and this comes from me and Mr. Tatro, as well, the building commissioner. Newly constructed house, when it was first proposed in the building department, it met all the setbacks, so it went forward. It was later discovered that through whatever error in the field occurred, that it moved actually into the side yard setback there. The setback distances in that zoning for that side yard is 15 feet, so they are one foot and 10 inches over the building. When it was discovered in the field that there was a problem, the building instructor had instructed them to stop, do not move forward, gave him two options, come and get the variance first, or take down the portion of the three-car garage which encroaches that distance over the side yard setback. They proceeded to complete the construction, and this is a self-inflicted hardship.
Okay. Will you go into detail, a little bit more detail maybe about, so the applicant was, according to Mr. Tatro, was notified that they were within that side yard setback?
Yes.
How many times were they notified? Just once?
He went out to the field. He got in contact with the property owners. There had been several conversations with him. He doesn't keep a log of those.
Right.
But they opted after discussing their options with him to go forward with the variance request.
Did Mr. Tatro make a note about how much of the house was completed on this issue?
At the time, it had not been sited. It hadn't been completely, the roof hadn't been completely buttoned down. So it was discovered fairly early. It wasn't like the last nail was going into the siding at the time. This was something that was discovered early enough that the correction could have been made on the field, and they opted to ask for the variance to keep the three-car garage instead of essentially lopping off that little tiny corner, which this is the piece that's in violation here, is just this piece that sits on that building setback line. So he had suggested to them to just cut it off, but at that point, they proceeded too far into the construction to make that viable option for them.
Okay.
Is the house done?
Yeah, Mr. Daggett, Ms. Drew.
Is the house completed now? Are they living in it?
I don't know if they're living in it, but the house is fairly well constructed.
Okay. Any other questions from Ms. Morgan? Okay. Sir?
My name is Nick Adamopolis. I'm here on behalf of both the applicant and the homeowner. Going to Mr. Daggett's question, they are currently not residing there. There's some work being done interior to the building. I believe the heating system is being installed at this point, but the exterior of the building at this point has been completed. As you can see from, I believe, the application, you can actually see that the home itself is sitting on there. We'd be asking for, I believe it's 1.8 to 1.1 foot...
Counsel, would you mind speaking into the microphone?
I apologize. The mask is...
Yeah, I understand.
I'd be asking for the 1 foot and 8 inches to 1 foot and 10 inch setback variance at this point. Ultimately, the home is construed in a way that it's kitty-cornered slightly so that it could be facing the cul-de-sac, which would may have it meet the ambience of the other homes around that cul-de-sac. It is at the end of this cul-de-sac. The other homes that do go around it are all facing it, so it was built slightly crooked so it could meet the lay of the other properties. At this point, it is built out completely, so it would be a financial hardship to go and have to potentially remove a back portion of this garage to get that 1 foot and 8 inch setback limitation. It is a single-family house, which is compliant with the exact area of everything around it. The property that it abuts that this setback is ultimately against is undeveloped land. We have had some discussions with the landowner there. I do believe that he put a public comment in earlier today. That ultimately had to do with some construction debris that may be on his property that we were addressing. We've heard nothing else from any of the butters saying that they have had any issues with the build at this point. Based upon the fact that it's a complete build, that we would have to drastically change the current structure of the building, that it's a single-family home, that it was built in a way so that it would fit into the neighborhood and have it facing the cul-de-sac, similar to all the other houses, we'd ask for the variance and ultimately answer any questions that the board has going forward. I can say this is the first time I was made aware of the previous discussions from the building inspector, so we may need to have the architect address those if the board has any questions on that. But at this point, I can just address the fact that the building is built, and we are asking for the variance request so that ultimately we can try to get an occupancy permit once the building interior is completed.
Yeah. Mr. Daggett?
Ian, attorney, do you think that we somehow could put together a timeline of conversations?
I could ask the building commissioner to do that.
Because I think that that's going to play an important role here on who knew how...
How early did they know?
Yeah.
I think the larger issue is that something happened out in the field. The property owners and the house owners are clearly not at fault. When the ASBIL plan was being developed, this is when it was discovered. There's clearly plenty of room over here.
There is a lot of space.
There's a lot of space there. So this, it's a matter of, somebody screwed up out in the field.
It's a matter of angle that it's at, really.
So I can have the building commissioner put together a timeline of conversations.
Do we have a copy of the original site plan?
Actually, I think we might have that.
I think you brought the angle, Mr. Fales. Ultimately, it was done that way just so that it could be facing the cul-de-sac as the property across the street was done.
Yeah, no, I understand that part. I'm just saying that when it was put in, because the house is so big, if you're off just by a couple degrees, you're off by a ton on that farce.
Yeah.
Yeah, 1 foot...
1 foot 8 inches.
As Ms. Morgan stated, ultimately, it seems to have been a miscommunication during the build.
Yeah.
Everything else was signed off on, and, you know, it wasn't really until, I guess, some of these communications started that they became aware of it. But at this point, it is substantially completed, so we can't just move the property at this point and kind of kitty-corner it back a little bit more.
Yeah.
Did we have a original site plan?
I don't have it here, but something would have had to have been filed with the building permit, and I can bring that forward.
So counsel, in my mind, obviously, we have a financial hardship involved here with correcting it. And for me, the issue is whether or not this owes to special circumstance related to the structure, because we do have a structure that's built, or the negligence of the applicant. And I don't think I have enough evidence before me to say one way... And I don't think I have enough evidence before me to say one way or the other. You said you just received word that there was multiple communications with the, or communications with the building inspector and a party, whether this was the builder, the applicant, or what have you. So that's kind of the issue where I'm stuck at, is, you know, do we have a special circumstance related to the structure, or was a special circumstance related to wrongful negligence of somebody? And I think I'd like to see more information on that. I think that's also what Mr. Daggett says as well. Mr. Mason, do you have any questions?
No, I really don't.
Oh, okay. So seeing that we need more information, actually, before we make a motion to continue it...
Can I make some comments, too?
Unless, unless you, unless there is somebody out here that can clarify those issues for us.
This is the owner, Jessica Mason.
So my, my name's Jessica Mason, and we were only made aware that we didn't follow setbacks at the time that our septic was staked, and the house was already there, the foundation was there, it was framed, all that was there. It got, the septic got staked out, and that's when the architects, when, not the architect, the engineer went back out, and that's when he realized, hey, let's see where the house lies. And there was a miscommunication between where the house ended up. I'm assuming at some point during construction, because, as you can see, it's a very small amount. And at that point, everything was already there, there's nothing we could have done. My house was framed, it was sited, my shingles were on. So I'm sure if you see the sequence, I still got everything signed off on, nobody knew this ever happened.
Okay.
Until, obviously, we came and filed the application.
I'll ask for public comment. Does anybody else have any questions for you? Before we, if we either make a motion to continue for more information, or close the public hearing? Does any member of the public care to comment at this time? Sir?
My name is Jay Glant. I'm the, I'm the applicant and the architect. What Jessica just said is, is accurate, that it was discovered after the house had been sited, and it was pretty much completely built. And yes, there was some sort of miscommunication, lack of communication, that created the situation that exists, but it wasn't intentional at all.
I have a question. So as the architect of the house, are you guys responsible for the engineering also, or is that a different firm?
The engineering for the site?
Yes.
It was a different firm.
So what is the pleasure of the board? Do we want to get more information from the building inspector? Or would we like to...
I'm still a little...
Yes.
I'm still a little confused about when Ted let them know. Was the foundation already in, in?
The house was built.
They had, they had not submitted a foundation as-built plan in time, and before they started the other work. So if they had submitted a as-built plan of the foundation, it would have been caught then, but work proceeded without that submission.
Okay.
And to add, the insulation was still signed off on.
For the first day, they heard when they wanted to get the step, they could have built it, it was standing, and it wasn't true that it stayed there, because they, so more like, they went along, it was a substantial structure definitely, it was sided, it was a roofline, the foundation was already made, so it doesn't, they were told to move forward with lying foundations, building out, that already occurred at the time of the first communication, this occurred, ultimately, they moved forward with the variance application at this moment.
The building permit timeline for, for all of these are on viewpoint, and I can pull those records, which will provide you a timeline of what permits were issued when.
Okay. And I know I would like to hear from Mr. Tetro's on, on when he was, when he notified the applicant. Yes, Mr.?
If we push this, is this going to stop the possibility of an occupancy permit? Like, when are you guys looking to move into this residence?
Obviously, as soon as we can. We sold our house two years ago.
But is it, I mean, are you guys trying to move in the next four weeks?
We probably could, yes.
So will this, will this, Ann, do you know if this will stop the occupancy permit?
It will not, because if the board decides not to grant the variance, then the order will be issued for them to shave off that part of the structure.
I just want to make sure it wasn't...
And it's the garage, so it's not impacting kitchens or bedrooms.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure I wasn't kind of holding them up.
Any other questions? Okay, between the board, what is the board's pleasure? Would we like to continue this?
Continue, yeah.
Continue it, okay. Is there a motion to continue?
I'll make that motion, continue.
January 1st.
Yeah.
January, January, January 4th. January 4th at 6:00 PM.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Morgan, would you please pull the board?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Fails?
Yes.
Mr. Piotr?
Yes, and I'll remind the applicant that the public hearing is still open, so you are free to submit additional evidence that the board can consider, that will support your assertions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other matters for us to consider tonight, Ms. Morgan?
No.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn to January 4th, 2022?
I will make that motion to adjourn.
And I will second that motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Fails?
Yes.
Mr. Piotr?
Yes, have a happy holidays, and I will see everybody in the new year.
Thank you. Microphones off, please.
Can I ask this specific question?
Yes.
So, I got the notice for the 200 Gore Road, is that, was that the guy that was all mad right then?